Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 7th, 2025 meeting. April, wow.
Smooth.
Great, April and snow. That's right. Meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am Barb Lewis, President this year. To my left is our Vice President Jeff Benton. To my right, Commissioner Gary Merrill, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Dawn Houston, and our other Deputy Administrator and General Counsel Eric Hostetler, and our Clerks Jennifer Wallraven and Randy Wilson. We can begin.
Resolution number 25-220. In the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held April 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Vote.
Vote on motion 25-220. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three. Resolution number 25-221. In the matter of approving purchase orders that announce certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0404.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Vote.
Vote on motion 25-221. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-222. In the matter of approving travel expense requests.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Vote.
Vote on motion 25-222. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-223. In the matter of a transfer of a liquor license request from Skybox Sports Bar Incorporated, doing business as the Skybox Sports Bar and to Skybox Sports Bar and Bar, forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no request for a hearing.
Confused by that?
Second.
Discussion.
Vote on motion 25-223. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 225-224. In the matter of canceling the Delaware County Commissioner's session scheduled for Thursday, May 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Vote.
Vote on motion 25-224. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-225. In the matter of approving the First Amendment to the contract for the purchase of temporary employment and payroll services between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and NESCO Resources LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. This is renewing a contract with NESCO. They are our employer of record for our CCMEP and youth services or employment services. We're not allowed to do that according to our rules, federal guidelines.
You're pleased with the performance?
Yes. Yes.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 22... I'm sorry, 25-225. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-226. In the matter of approving the contract for services of a licensed professional clinic counselor between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and Lisa A. Davis, RNMA LPCC Counseling and Consultation LLC, for clinical counseling services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And this is a new provider of providing counseling services as we work to reunify a family with the mother. We have five or six children in our care or that we're working with that we're working towards reunification.
Okay.
So you've not used this group before?
We have not. We seem pretty pleased, though, with the work they've already done and plan to use them in the future.
Okay.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-226. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-227. In the matter of approving Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Prime Construction Management and Survey for On-Call Construction Inspection Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Vote.
Discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is a two-year contract with Prime for inspection services on our capital projects. We spent about $160,000 in 2024, and we budgeted $150,000 in 2025. So that's moving forward with that phase of the work. They do oversee the OECD project, the package plant projects, and in the future, we'll do the North Star project as well.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-227. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-228. In the matter of authorizing the use of a procurement card for regional sewer district.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is a P-card for our lab program manager. She has a couple of staff members that work for her, and it would just be easier for her to have her own P-card.
Sure. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-228. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Next up, we have our Environmental Services Director with the monthly sewer updates.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. So we had quite a busy March, which is, I think, pretty typical. The developers are getting ready to hit the ground running with new projects this year. So top is a plant approval. We had one new project in for the plant approvals, which is the Courtyards on Concord. This is an Epcun project. It's way down here in the corner. It will flow into the Tartan Fields Treatment Plant, and this is 30 single-family units in their first phase of this project. Make sure I don't miss any here. And then on subdividers agreements, Hyatt Meadows Development. This is a condo development, 78 units in this phase, Lifestyle Communities. This one has been in for a while, so I think they're just kind of getting this moving again. And then Clark Shaw. We have Section 1, Phase A and B, and then also Section 2. This is that project that's off Sawmill Parkway up in the northeast corner where Clark Shaw Road comes into Sawmill. It's the MI project that we've been working on for a while. And then Berlin Farms. This is another MI project. This is up off of Pyatt and Berlin Station Roads. This was formerly that Long Hill Development. So MI has quite a bit of work going on up there with Berlin Farms West, which is obviously on the west side of Pyatt Road. And then they also have East, which is on the other side of the road as well. And then the Villas at Old Harbor. Go ahead. Do you have a question? No. Villas at Old Harbor. This is off of Old State Road and Hollenback Road, 40 units. This is a three-pillar development. And then down on sewer acceptances, Woodcrest Crossing. This is another MI project, 49 units, and this one at the northwest corner of Hyatt and Stites Road. And then Eagle Creek is the Pulte development that we've seen over the past several months on these updates. This is located over off of 3Bs and a K and Sherman Road, 35 units in this section. And then finally, North Star Ivywood. This is another one we saw over the past couple of months, 64 residential lots. This is by North Star Residential Development. This is at the corner of Galena and Wilson Road, 64 units in this one. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a question unrelated to this. Our sewer facility on 315, how's it progressing over?
Very well, very well. And even over the past, however many inches of rain we got over the past weekend, things performed quite well at all of our facilities, including that one. So we should be wrapping up the OECD project probably late summer, early fall of 2025. So things are going well.
Good.
Oh, that's great. Good question.
Yeah, I had a question, too, semi-related. The Economic Development Department put out their housing update, and they're seeing a spike in apartment vacancies. And I know we had a big year for adding apartments last year. Do you, you know, what do you see as this year's apartment expectations?
January was, we had a ton of new units connect in January. I'm not sure, we didn't see that high of numbers in February, March, but I'm not sure, you know, kind of where that goes from here. I think we've still got quite a few. I think every single month, you know, we're coming in with new multifamily and apartment complexes. So seems like it's not slowing down anytime soon. Now, on the building safety side, I did see a little bit, a little bit of a slowdown on the commercial side with their reviews. So maybe that is, you know, part of that as well.
Yeah. And again, it was interesting that Delaware County's apartment vacancy is now higher than most other markets in central Ohio. And that's, I think, because we brought on so many units in the late summer, fall, and early winter that they just haven't filled up yet, so.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly could be the case. Because, yes, it was booming last year and kind of saw that trend continuing into 2025. So we'll certainly keep an eye on that as well.
Okay. Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you, Tiffany.
That brings us to item number 12. Resolution number 25-229. In the matter of directing the county engineer to reestimate the construction costs for the Webster Arnold Number 355 Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Soil and Water. The Webster Arnold Project was originally approved in 2022. The estimate for that would have been formulated originally in 2021, and it was really behind the curve of the spike or the rapid inflation of the cost of construction that we've seen over the last four or five years. We've put this project out for bid three separate times, different times of the year, trying to get a successful bid. We've not received even a single bid. The last two times, we have advertised it. And based on feedback we've received from some of the contractors that normally bid our jobs, the estimate's just too low. It's not piquing their interest. This resolution is necessary. The board has to direct us to reestimate the project, which we're prepared to do. So we recommend your approval.
And that require another meeting of the people involved?
That is my understanding, yes.
Yeah. Were they close? Were the bids close?
The first time we bid it, no. The one bid we had was probably, I want to say $40,000 over the construction estimate. And then, like I said, the last two times, we didn't even get a single bid, so.
Okay.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-229. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-230. Resolution approving the First Amendment to the contract between the Delaware County Commissioners and Lawrence LLC for the 2024-2025 roadside mowing north.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Bodnar with the Engineers' Office. For your consideration, this is an amendment to the contract that was approved last year that covers the 2024 and 2025 season. And this is for the northern section of the county. So this would approve the mowing of that area and service provided at the 2024 rates for 2025. So there's no increase for the services performed, and we would recommend your approval. For your information, the cutoff line between north and south is US 36 and State Route 37.
That's the Mason-Dixon line, I guess.
Yeah, that's the Mason-Dixon line.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-230. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-231. Approving the First Amendment to the contract between Delaware County Commissioners and DR Lawn Care LLC for the 2024-2025 roadside mowing south.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. This is for the southern portion of the county. And again, no increase of the cost for services performed.
Okay, that's great. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-231. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-232. In the matter of authorizing the purchase of equipment for the Engineers' Office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
For your consideration, Commissioners, this is for the purchase of a padfoot drum roller. The cost is $40,066.75. It's through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. We've budgeted it for this year's expenses, and we would recommend your approval.
Okay. No more discussion, I take it. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-232. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-233. In the matter of authorizing Delaware County, Ohio, to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. As you know, we've been a partner with the State Department of Transportation's Purchasing Program for many years. They've asked us to reestablish the connectivity through an agreement with the county.
Okay.
So we recommend your approval.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-233. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-234. In the matter of authorizing the purchase of equipment for the Engineers' Office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. Again, for your consideration, this resolution authorizes the purchase of two 2026 day cab trucks at a purchase price of $185,944 through the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program. And we recommend your approval. This was budgeted for this year's expenses.
I was just going to ask you. Do you have a say?
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-234. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-235. In the matter of approving an owner's agreement for Hyatt's Road widening at Clark Shaw Crossing and Clark Shaw Crossing, Section 2, Phase A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. This is a standard owner's agreement for the widening, resurfacing, and drainage improvements to Hyatt's Road just east of Sawmill Parkway. It's associated with the Clark Shaw Crossing, Section 2, Phase A, which is a single, a 42-single-family lot development located north off of Hyatt's Road between Sawmill and Liberty Road in Liberty Township. And we would recommend your approval.
Okay, further discussion? Vote.
Vote on motion 25-235. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-236. In the matter of approving the flats of subdivision for Marigold and Berlin Farms West, Section 5.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. Again, for your consideration, Marigold is a 177-unit multifamily development located at the southwest corner of Lewis Center and Green Meadows Drive in Orange Township. Berlin Farms West, Section 5, is a 35-single-family lot subdivision located north off of Berlin Station Road, just west of Pyatt Road in Berlin Township. And we would recommend your approval.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-236. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-237. In the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. 24 standard utility right-of-way permits for your consideration and approval.
I see that's written on here just to help you out.
It is, and I appreciate that. I need that type of oversight.
That's a big list. I don't think we've ever had one that long.
Ambitious.
And a lot, I assume, getting ready for spring work.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-237. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-238. In the matter of awarding a bid and approving a contract between the Delaware County Commissioners and Double Z Construction Company for the project known as Dell CR 224-5.98, Steamtown Road Bridge.
My apologies. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. For your consideration, this project involves a replacement of the bridge on Steamtown Road over the west branch of Allen Creek. Three bids were received. The lowest and most responsible bid was tendered by Double Z Construction. The project is scheduled to begin in July and be completed in October. There will be a possible, there will be a closure of that bridge during the construction period, and we recommend your approval.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-238. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-239. In the matter of awarding a bid for asphalt materials for 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. For your consideration, this resolution awards a non-exclusive bid for 2025 asphalt materials to seven different vendors. This is, this, excuse me. These materials are to be used by our Highway Department for repairs throughout the course of the year, and we recommend your approval.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-239. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-240. In the matter of establishing the maintenance bond for ravines at Hoover.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners. This resolution establishes the one-year maintenance bond period for the improvements to ravines at Hoover, which is located east off of Tussock Street Road, north of Big Walnut Road in Genoa Township. It's 56 lots, and we recommend your approval.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-240. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Our next item is Engineer Boserman has an OPWC funding update.
Thank you, Lee. Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Engineer Boserman.
There is a question on the ballot in May for the Ohio voters to request approval to renew the state bonding authority for the OPWC program. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what's behind that and how it impacts Delaware County. The, a bit of history first. In 1987, this was first enacted. So this goes back going on 40 years of funding for local governments. And it came about in the face of a lot of struggles for local government agencies to be able to build infrastructure projects or to do major capital maintenance and improvement to their system. And so I pulled out some notes from when that first was on the ballot and some of the justification was the increasing cost of construction and how that outpaced the revenue that was available to local government agencies at that time. It sounds pretty familiar, doesn't it? You know, we're in an environment of over ten percent, ten to fifteen percent construction inflation costs. And so this issue is still relevant, it still matters, and it's still really important to local governments. So it's been renewed four times, and this will be the fifth time that it's been before us. So it'll be for a ten-year period. And it actually, our high constitution requires the state, when they issue bonds, that it has to be a voter-approved issuance so that the legislature can't take on this kind of debt without the voter's approval. So it started as a one-point-two-billion-dollar program over ten years in nineteen eighty-seven. And today, that issue is two-point-five billion dollars, what will be before us in May. So that's some history. The purpose is to fund local government infrastructure projects, roads, bridges, sewer, water, and stormwater. So those are the criterias of projects that can apply. For a frame of reference, since nineteen eighty-seven, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight projects have been approved here in Delaware County and have funded over eighty million dollars of investment in that period of time. And most of those projects would not have been done without this funding source. Because there's no other source available to most of our local governments for these types of projects. So it has been very positively received. It has passed each time it's been on the ballot by substantial amount. That doesn't mean it will this time. It's important for us to get the word out. You know better than I and better than most how sensitive an economic situation that we find ourselves in as a country. And who knows how the public's going to respond to an issue like this. So I hope we can communicate to them the importance of this. And probably the most important message is this is not a tax increase. This is funded by the state tax dollars that we all pay as individuals, that we send to Columbus, and we get money back here in our local government, in our local government's hands to do projects. And one of the other really important parts of this is that the decisions about which projects get funded are made locally. We're in a district of six counties. The state's divided up into integrating committee districts. And each of those districts grades, evaluates, and puts forth a slate of projects to be funded from our district. So I sit on our grading committee, I've chaired that, I've chaired the executive committee. I'm still on the executive committee and still have, representing you in that committee about what projects are important to our district and how that meshes with Delaware County's priorities and challenges. The six counties were with Marl, Knox, Licking, Fairfield, and Pickaway Counties. So we were kind of a horseshoe-shaped district around the city of Columbus and Franklin County. Franklin County is our own standalone district. And so they don't have to necessarily work with other counties or political subdivisions outside of their county. But we have a very good relationship with the counties in our district. We all understand that we all have needs, and nobody should take the lion's share of the money. The pot of money that was distributed this past year was, I believe it was eleven-point-two-million dollars in grant funding. It's made up of several sources, but the biggest source is this bond issue that by far and away the largest source. Grants and loans are available through this program, and you won't beat the terms of the loan. They're a zero-interest loan, and the term being the life of the project. The goal is to put money in the hands of local governments to be able to facilitate projects that they otherwise would not be able to. So we make those decisions locally. The state honors those decisions as long as there aren't any technical flaws in the application process. And once you have a project approved, it is the easiest money to spend that's out there for infrastructure.
Easy, you mean the steps you have to go through to get it.
Yes, I was going to expound on that. The state money, state transportation dollars, the federal transportation dollars that we receive come with a litany of procedural steps and approvals and clearances that have to be met. This money comes back to us as if it were county money to begin with. Whatever steps we follow are the steps we follow to spend this money. And so you can apply for funding in October or November. You'll know in February or March whether the district's approved your project. The bonds are issued in the first of July, and you can start construction on a project in July after having applied for the grant just seven or eight months before. So there's no other program like that. There's no other place that you're able to do what you can do with these dollars and stretch it as far as you can. So just as another frame of reference, since two thousand seventeen, there have been twenty-four different local government agencies in Delaware County receive grant funding and on sixty-one projects. So that's in the last eight years. We've been fortunate to be able to move forward projects that really otherwise would not happen without this source of funding. So that's a lot of information, statistics to throw at you. But I just say that it's absolutely the most impactful infrastructure funding program that the state has. And through my relationships with county engineers around the country, this program is the envy of every state I talk to about it. It's really an important thing that we renew this. And I can't think of a better use for our local tax dollars that we send to the state being used this way locally and at our direction. So are there any questions or comments about that?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for you, Chris. Thank you for the update. And we've certainly all seen a number of these projects over the years. And, you know, it's very gratifying to see some important projects getting done thanks to this program. Are all cities, villages, and townships eligible?
Yes.
That's what I was going to say, that was my understanding.
They are. So the agencies that are eligible for funding are counties, cities, villages, townships, and in places where they have sewer and waters, standalone sewer and water districts, like Licking County has Southwest Sewer and Water District. They also are eligible for funding under this program.
Okay, okay. The money that is, well, I know you're part of the committee that kind of prioritizes. What projects score higher? You know, what are the projects that typically do better in the rankings?
So there are a number of categories of the scoring that can move the needle on a project. Some of those are, the more money that a local government brings of the project cost, there's a ten percent minimum. But if you have twenty-five, fifty percent local funding, you get a higher priority for that. You've got more skin in the game. That's one way. The program encourages partnering, so if there are multiple jurisdictions involved in a project. For instance, in this current funding round, we just approved a project for Shanahan Road improvements. That sits on the county line between Orange and Berlin Township. And so it was a joint application for projects. You can picture what Shanahan Road, how narrow that is in front of the Old and Tangy Schools complex there. So it's a really a great project that needs to be done, and it received priority because there were multiple jurisdictions involved. It does encourage economic development. Though, most of the communities are really just trying to hold their infrastructure together and don't, most projects don't include an economic development component. But if they do, that receives priority as well. It prioritizes improving existing infrastructure over building new infrastructure. So existing projects, bringing them up to standards, rate higher than extending, you know, building a new section over. Safety's a big issue.
Yeah, we've seen that a number of times, safety improvements.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do have some comments. First of all, we as commissioners cannot take a position on this, so by statute. But so I'm just going to summarize some of the things I think I heard today. This is a great way for local government funding. We've done two-hundred-and-eighty-one projects in our area since the eighties. All this was done without a tax increase.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-eight.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-eight, okay, that's even better. Our area has been treated fairly in this district as far as the distribution money over this time period.
It has.
There's very little bureaucracy on this program compared to other programs that we have the opportunity to be involved in, which means you get from A to Z much quicker and probably much more efficiently than other projects. And to use your word, you said impactful, and I would use the words, you get a lot more bang for your buck. So same thing, just said a little differently. And the economic impact that it has and the existing projects taking precedent over new projects, which is important in the sense that sometimes trying to get something that's already in place done is a little more of a challenge than something new. So that's my summary. Again, we can't take a position, but I think I can summarize, so I'm.
Well, as individuals, we can take a position. I certainly support it.
I would encourage you to do that, to the extent that you can and you're willing. If I could add one more thing. I mentioned that projects that bring more local share to the application receive a higher priority. That's really the genesis of our grant enhancement program that we do with our townships and cities and villages for application to OPWC, where we match their local share up to one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And so, you know, our goal collectively is to try to bring as much of that grant money back into Delaware County, whether it's the county government's project, whether it's a city, village, or township project. It's good for all of us if that money gets reinvested in our county. And so I think the fact that we have that program has been really important to help our local governments obtain funding through this program.
Yeah, I think that's important to just emphasize that we do partner with the township, cities, villages to enhance their chances of getting financially support stronger than we used to. I know that was your initiative a few years ago to up that match.
Right.
And again, it continues to pay dividends, helping the townships who struggle to have put the dollars together for these very expensive road projects.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chris.
It's great information to get out there, so I really appreciate your coming in. Great summary.
Thank you for asking, Chris.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five is our ten o'clock hearing, and we are permitted to start because it is after ten o'clock. We have a public hearing for consideration of the Nelson Number One Thirty-One watershed drainage improvement petition filed by Hardscrabble Farms Incorporated. And then you have a list.
I have my list, all right.
You're good to start whenever you want.
Okay. Well, I will welcome everyone to the first hearing for the consideration of the Nelson Number One Thirty-One Drainage Improvement Petition. There's a sign-in sheet circulating, and we ask that everyone sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. And I'll just go over what will happen today first. We will hear a report from the county engineer in Soil and Water Conservation District. There are copies available of this report. I believe Jen is handing them out. Following the presentation, there'll be a time for questions from the board. After board questions, the board will hear from any interested owners who wish to testify. Those speaking for or against the petition must be an owner, as defined in Section sixty-one thirty-one point oh-one of the Ohio Revised Code. Before accepting testimony for or against the petition, the board will acknowledge receipt of any landowner written testimony before hearing live testimony. We will first call for those wishing to testify in favor of the petition, and then we'll call for those wishing to testify in opposition to the petition. And before testifying, you will be asked to take an oath. After all those wishing to testify for or against the petition have been heard, there will be an opportunity for response or rebuttal testimony. The board then will close the public hearing after all testimony and evidence have been presented. After listening to testimony and the report of the engineer, the board will decide whether to proceed with the survey and design or to dismiss the petition. And the board must consider the following factors in making its decision: whether the proposed improvement is necessary, whether the proposed improvement will be conducive to the public welfare, and whether the cost of the proposed improvement will be less than the benefit of the improvement process that the improvement provides. If the board proceeds with the petition, the Delaware County engineer will prepare plans, reports, and individual schedules of assessments for the project. When plans are complete, a final hearing will be set. Notification of the hearing will be given to the landowners, and the board will consider the project. And next, I would like to call Brett to continue the hearing. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator Soil and Water. I will read the first hearing report into the record. First hearing report, Nelson Number One Thirty-One Watershed Drainage Petition per O R C sixty-one thirty-one, April seventh, two thousand twenty-five. This report has been prepared for the preliminary hearing on a drainage improvement petition filed by Hardscrabble Farms Incorporated on October first, two thousand twenty-four. The original petition has been signed by seven individuals representing fourteen of the nineteen parcels in the watershed. The course and termini of the requested improvements are quoted from the petition as follows: In Delaware County, Brown Township, within the Nelson Number One Thirty-One watershed, and generally following but not limited to the course and termini of existing improvements. The following is the nature of the work requested, as quoted from the petition: To generally improve the drainage, both surface and subsurface, to a good and sufficient outlet by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required and/or creating new surface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as required by this petition. Petition process: This petition has been submitted according to Section sixty-one thirty-one of the Ohio Revised Code, which authorizes a Board of Commissioners to act on behalf of benefited property owners to make drainage improvements. If the Board of Commissioners decides to proceed with the project, the costs related to the improvements in the development of plans, reports, and schedules are assessed to the landowners in the watershed according to the benefit received to their watershed acreage. These special assessments will be added to the property taxes for each property and can be spread over a maximum of a fifteen-year period. Property owners may also choose to pay their assessment in a lump sum payment prior to placement on their property taxes. Additionally, the improvements will be placed on the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program in perpetuity per O R C Section sixty-one thirty-seven. And the annual maintenance assessments will appear on property tax statements as a special assessment in the same manner as the construction assessments. These annual maintenance assessments are generally in the range of two to five percent of the construction assessment. The decision to approve a petition project is a three-step process. First, a viewing of the proposed improvement is conducted for the commissioners to familiarize themselves with the watershed and general conditions. The commissioners conducted the viewing for this project by drone video on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Next, a preliminary hearing is held to consider the initial feasibility of the proposal. It is this preliminary first hearing that is before us today. If this petition is approved, a final hearing will be conducted to further consider this petition. At that time, final details such as engineering plans and specifications, cost estimates, and a proposed schedule of assessments will be known. Existing conditions: The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District and Delaware County Engineers Office have made the following observations of the watershed using onsite evaluation and a review of available historic records, aerial photography, topographic mapping, soils mapping, and drone video. The Nelson One Thirty-One watershed, as defined for this hearing, measures approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-nine acres. The predominant land use within the watershed is agricultural with smaller areas of rural residential and rights-of-way. Improvements have been made in the watershed utilizing the drainage petition process in eighteen ninety and nineteen oh-seven. These improvements appear to consist of subsurface drainpipe installation only. A new subsurface drainpipe was privately installed parallel to the original drainpipe in two thousand fifteen. The existing drainage system appears to be functioning as a good and sufficient outlet for the watershed. No known issues requiring immediate repair are known to exist at this time. The drainage system is not currently covered by an O R C sixty-one thirty-seven Drainage Maintenance easement. Estimate of cost factors favorable and unfavorable, benefit versus cost. O R C sixty-one thirty-one requires the county engineers to state in a report factors favorable and unfavorable to a proposed project, estimate the cost of the project, and state an opinion as to whether the benefits of the project exceed the cost. The following information is presented for your consideration: Current value estimate: The proposed project would begin approximately one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty feet east of Skinner Road at the junction with the primer number oh-seven oh-three Drainage Maintenance Project and extend approximately five-thousand-two-hundred feet west and northwest to meet the request of the petition. The primary items of existing infrastructure are fifteen-inch smooth interior drainpipe and fourteen-inch clay pipe. Estimate of current value: Construction: two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-sixteen dollars. Project administration, survey, and engineering: five thousand dollars. Drainage maintenance: O R C sixty-one thirty-seven, first-year startup, five percent of the construction estimate, ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents. Total project current value estimate: two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, eighty cents. Notes: It is important to understand that the above estimates are preliminary and made in the absence of a current detailed investigation of the area. Should the petition be approved to move forward, a detailed analysis will be performed to establish the capacity and condition of the existing infrastructure. The estimate presented reflects the replacement cost estimate should the infrastructure require complete replacement. The existing infrastructure will be evaluated as part of survey and design should the project be approved at this first hearing. It is expected some part of the existing system will be of a condition acceptable to being placed onto drainage maintenance with no improvement necessary. The above estimate does not contain a contingency amount. The amount of necessary contingency would be evaluated as part of the survey and engineering design of the project and added to the estimate presented at the final hearing. Contingency cost is typically estimated at fifteen to twenty percent of the final construction estimate. As an example, a fifteen percent contingency would add approximately thirty-four thousand dollars to the construction estimate. Should the project fail to be approved at the final hearing, the benefiting landowners, as defined by O R C sixty-one thirty-one, may still be responsible for the cost of project administration, survey, and engineering design. Assessments: If the project moves forward to a second hearing, the Ohio Revised Code instructs the county engineer to calculate the assessments to individual property owners based on the benefits received from the improvements for the various properties in the watershed. O R C sixty-one thirty-one states that, quote, "Uplands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other human methods shall be considered to be benefited by an improvement that is required to dispose of the accelerated flow of water from the uplands." Benefits are further defined by the O R C as "elimination or reduction of damage from flood, removal of water conditions that jeopardize public health, safety, or welfare, and increased value of land resulting from the improvement." It should be noted that property owners are only assessed for those improvements that are located downstream from their properties. No property is assessed for improvements located upstream. The public agencies that own rights-of-way for public roads and other public lands are also assessed for both construction and maintenance costs in the same manner as private property owners. Individual parcel assessments are not calculated for the preliminary hearing and are only calculated if the petition moves forward to a second or final hearing. Factors favorable and unfavorable: Factors favorable to the improvement: Improved surface and subsurface drainage in the watershed; Reduction of future deterioration of surface and subsurface drainage infrastructure; Annual inspections, maintenance, and protection of the improvement in perpetuity. Factors unfavorable to the improvement: Temporary land use disruption during construction; Cost of construction and maintenance may be a burden to some landowners; Removal of existing trees and brush in the improvement area. Benefits versus cost: Assessments for property within the watershed are calculated based on the benefits derived from as well as the contribution to the drainage system. The benefits to agricultural lands are realized differently from what is commonly seen for residential parcels. However, both types of land use are commonly recognized to have benefit from a good and sufficient drainage outlet. A publication by the Ohio State University Extension titled Returns to Farm Drainage details several studies conducted by Ohio State researchers on the effects of drainage on crop yields. The studies show that fields with good drainage will produce higher yields than fields that have poor drainage. A recently completed twenty-five-year study showed that subsurface drainage increased corn yields by twenty-four percent to thirty-nine percent and increased soybean yields by thirteen percent to forty-six percent. The same study also analyzed the return on investment for installing subsurface drainage in a field and found that for corn, four dollars is returned for every one dollar invested, and for soybeans, three dollars is returned for every one dollar invested. There are approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-four acres in the watershed currently being used for agricultural production. The average estimated yield increases for the soil types present in the watershed, given the appropriate drainage improvements are in place, are approximately forty-six bushels per acre for corn and fourteen bushels per acre for soybeans. Using current two-year average crop prices from the USDA National Agricultural Statistics Service of six dollars and eighteen cents per bushel for corn and fourteen dollars per bushel for soybeans, it can be estimated that drainage improvements can potentially produce an average annual benefit of eighty-thousand-two-hundred-six dollars. This estimate assumes an even distribution of corn and soybeans in the watershed. To state it generally, the benefits of drainage will equal the increased yield multiplied by the market price. It is also reasonable to view potential annual benefits as potential losses should the existing drainage system fail to be maintained and cease to function as a good and sufficient outlet. The increased value or benefit for residential parcels is much more subjective and difficult to quantify. The lack of an adequate drainage outlet can dramatically affect the seasonal usability of a property and deteriorate the condition of household sewage treatment systems, potentially limiting the value of homes for resale. Should existing systems fail, the cost to perform repairs or construct alternate sewage treatment systems can range from the thousands to tens of thousands of dollars. It would also be reasonable to consider the cost of environmental degradation due to residential sewage treatment systems that may not be functioning properly. Other benefits that are commonly perceived as a result of drainage improvements focus on quality of life and positive neighborhood perception. Communities that have planned and maintained stormwater drainage infrastructures generally have higher resale values than those communities that are known to have a history of drainage problems or flooding. Conclusions: Based on all of the information gathered and generated for this project, we believe the benefits of the proposed petition exceed, sorry, excuse me, proposed petition request exceed the estimated current value of the improvements, and the establishment of a drainage maintenance easement per O R C sixty-one thirty-seven would be beneficial to the would be beneficial to the watershed as a whole. We also find that the proposed improvement is necessary and that it will be conducive to the public welfare. The testimony brought to the joint -- to the Board, excuse me, the Board, however, by the landowners as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the cost should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project. Should the current petition be approved to proceed to a final hearing, the petition bond will be returned, and detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and a schedule of assessments would be prepared. Additionally, a benefit versus cost analysis will also be performed to further determine the feasibility of advancing this proposed project.
Thank you, Brett. Does the Board have any questions for Brett?
Yeah, I got a question, Brett. Just more of a, just to confirm it. What you're saying at this point, obviously, is preliminary, is that you don't expect to have to do any construction work?
Yes, all indications at this point would be that the infrastructure is in good shape. If the Board approves us to move forward, one of the first things we will do will be to put the camera in it and inspect the inside of the pipe.
Okay, and therefore, if that bears out, then the only cost to the landowners would be the annual maintenance assessment initially anyway?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's two to five percent of the construction?
Yes.
Okay, I will ask our clerk if there's any written?
Yes, we did not receive any additional written testimony for this project.
Okay, and next?
Counsel?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you can give it to her, Mr. Skinner. Thank you.
This letter is from Jean Jumper, one-one-four-zero Jumper Road, and there are three copies. I can give the Board a copy now. It would appear at first glance that this person is not in favor of a petition.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Why don't you have a question for clarity from reading this? My understanding is that older clay tile will be removed and replaced with plastic with the new maintenance plan. Is that accurate and accurate statement?
That would be part of the evaluation. If the clay tile in existing form is in good shape and acceptable to be placed onto maintenance, then we would do that. If there would be a problem with the clay tile that, you know, discovered during the survey investigation or at some point in the future, obviously, it would be replaced with modern material. Would not -- we wouldn't put clay back in the ground.
But your comments earlier indicated you didn't think it would be necessary?
I don't have any indications at this point that it would be necessary.
Okay, let's move ahead.
For clarity's sake, I'll state, when we formulate the estimate in a situation like this, we have to estimate the value on what it would take to replace it so that the estimate is reflective of, you know, modern plastic smooth interior pipe.
Okay, we will move ahead to those wishing to testify in favor of the position -- of petition. Anybody wishing to testify in favor of the petition? No one's willing to testify in favor of the petition. Okay, then I will call for those wishing to testify in opposition to the petition.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Oh, good morning, Mr. Skinner. I am actually going to put you under oath.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? And if you'll state your name and your address? And actually, we usually have people state which parcel. Let me just put it this way. We'll just have you state which parcel you're interested in talking about.
My name is Gary Skinner. I live at twenty-five fourteen Skinner Road, Delaware. And I'm doing something that I'm kind of embarrassed to do. I'm speaking against my own petition. Several things have changed. I have two or three things I'd like to discuss about that.
Sure.
My wife and I own personally land at the outlet, the lower portion of this petition, the Nelson one thirty-one ditch. We also own in whole Hardscrabble Farms, which is near the very upper end of this watershed. And I think we probably -- I don't have the figures. I'd have to ask Sawon Water, but I'm sure we own close to half of the watershed. The two tiles that are in this watershed are in excellent shape. And I would like to reiterate one thing that was said earlier. It was the smooth-wall pipe that we installed at our own expense of about forty thousand dollars to go from the outlet to the termini of the project. I think I spent about forty thousand dollars of our own money to do that. But that pipe that's in the ground was said to be smooth-wall, which it is, but that also means it's a double-wall, which is a lot stronger. We, for years and years, my sons and I have only installed the double-wall for mains. There's too much risk of failure of single-wall pipe in the bigger sizes. But what's happened on the north end, I was concerned for years about development on the south side of five-twenty-one. Our bulk of our land's on the north side. And as far as the development, we would end with single homes or more expansive developments with trees, yards, whatever. And I approached those landowners asking for an easement, and they did not want to sign up for that. That was the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Unbeknownst to me, they came to us earlier this year and wanted to know if we wanted to buy the land. So this is what's really changed my perspective on what I want to do. We did buy and closed in February twenty-first this land. So we now have control of a lot more of these outlets. To us, the land value today, we cannot afford to let a maine go down. Just this little project, we're looking at millions of dollars in farmland and income. I think one of the other things I want to talk about, the clay tile. I'm eighty-one years old, and in sixty-five years that I've been able to be out with my dad in early years or whatever, there's been one clay tile fail on this. It's a very unique tile system. Others I know we deal with are terrible. They're always collapsing. So again, I want to say that I'm speaking against my own petition. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming forward and explaining everything to us. Are there questions, Mr. Skinner?
I don't think I have a question. Obviously, it's awkward for you being on the other side. I guess I'm trying to fully understand the transition. I think you gave a pretty good explanation of that. It's still a little confusing. Now, the reality is, this estimate of two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars, did that factor into your concerns? Although you heard today that it probably, probably would be necessary?
Probably, again, and Sawon Water is going to have some detailed information, but I'm going to give a fair estimate. Our first bill will be five thousand dollars plus the first year. And we have spent zero, other than sixty-five years ago, one tile. It's not economical. It's a burden in this particular situation. I've done other petitions, which I'm all for. The petition system is excellent. Years ago, it didn't used to be that way, but between Sawon Water and the Commissioners, things have changed for the better in the last several years. I appreciate the petition system. And I think Mr. Jumper in his letter that you're reading, he's complaining too about the cost of this when we're not spending any money. And I acknowledge there, I'm not holding back. There could be a failure in the whole system, which is, at this point, I feel is unrealistic. So the expense that I view, my guess, to the future, is very, very minimal. Not five thousand dollars plus, plus the next years. I understand it might be less than what the first year is in assessments. But we're spending thousands of dollars and not accomplishing anything except the potential. It's kind of like life insurance. While you're young and alive, you're not getting much, but it's, they got to cover you.
Thank you. Anything else right now? I'm going to, I will call and see if there's any other opposition.
No, I guess I have a question for our counsel. I mean, can the petition be withdrawn?
There's not a procedure in the Revised Code for withdrawal, but you can take into consideration the testimony of the petitioner, certainly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skinner. I will also call for any other opposition. Is there any other opposition to the project? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the Board at this point. Any comments from the Board?
Perhaps we should end the hearing and?
Ah, you're right. We need to end the hearing.
The time is ten thirty-two.
Thank you. Comments from the Board proceeding?
Go ahead.
I'll go first. Obviously, this is a little unusual. But the Board must consider the following factors in making a decision whether proposed improvement is necessary. I've never used that as a reason to decline one, but I think based on the testimony I heard today, that is appropriate and that would be the position I would take. I could not move forward because I do not see it necessary because, or no comments in favor. And those who signed the petitions, at least one individual spoke on the other side. So I don't think the proposal is necessary. I would not support it.
Okay, then would ask you?
Commissioner May have a comment?
Well, I'm going to ask you to read the -- Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Merrill, but I would add that I don't think the, since it's very likely to have no cost most years, that the cost exceeds, that the cost of the process and the maintenance would exceed the benefit. Because again, the system's in great shape, needing virtually no maintenance most years. So there's really very little cost to the existing situation, but this would throw maybe ten thousand a year annual maintenance costs on top of something that is almost zero most years. So I don't think it's necessary either. It's in good shape, which again is good. And then also, I don't think the cost exceeds the benefit.
Yeah, I would like to just make a comment on that. This petition is generally, I'd always consider an insurance policy, long-term, the maintenance fee. And I do think that is, that five thousand, whatever the number is, is the insurance policy going forward. Much like if you have car term insurance on our vehicles, et cetera. But I understand that comment and whether we do it based on necessity or on the cost is irrelevant. I cannot support it, so.
Well, and it, I don't think it's even conducive to the public welfare. So we've got all three, all three reasons that we need to factor in in making this decision. So let's read the motion on turning down the?
Resolution number two-five dash two-four-one in the matter of dismissing the Nelson Number one thirty-one watershed drainage improvement petition filed by Hardscrabble Farms Incorporated and others.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. I think we pretty much laid it out.
Vote on motion two-five dash two-four-one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Do we want to have any Commissioner comments today?
The only thing I would, I go first? The only thing I'll say is tomorrow night, the PAL has their State of the City, which I have plans to attend, and that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, just one other thing. The OCCO reception is tomorrow night at the State House. We'll be going to that before the PAL. I'm going to make both. I'll probably just get there just as a State of the City starting. But that's always good. Very well attended. Yeah, exactly, very well attended. And it's local government officials from around the state meeting informally with, at the State House with legislators. Then I also want to mention that High Wesleyan just did a press release. The reason I want to mention this is Land Bank played a key role in this. High Wesleyan is redoing their residential campus. They've redeveloped, renovated a number of properties, residential properties. They've decided that some of them aren't really good properties going forward. And they've built some new in the Bradford Milligan. It is a beautiful facility right on Liberty Street, across from the fire station. And behind it is Bashford Hall. And Bashford Hall was built almost seventy years ago. It was nineteen fifty-six. And it's just, just not very usable[1707.02]